Calling to order the regular meeting of the Gillum County Court. It is September seventeenth and we're in Arlington today. We do have a forum, we do have one member of the county court who's not present, Commissioner Wilkins. But we do have a forum and we will now have the flag salute. I have led the lead to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Welcome. Are there any additions or revisions to the agenda? Okay, so I just requested earlier that we move four point six to new business. Yes, and that is the road use agreement for Weatherford Road and it will be moved to new business and off of the consent agenda. Okay, correspondence, public comments, individuals wishing to address the county court may do so. At this time, speakers are asked to raise their hand, be recognized by the chair, give their name and city and make comments to three minutes. So any public comment? There's no one's, okay, yes.
Jeff Buffton, Mayor of City of Arlington.
Thank you. The only reason is because the video we need to be able to hear in a fast year.
Jeff Buffton, City of Arlington, I would just like to say, representing the city, that we'd like to thank you for the two hundred K new business construction incentive grant that you guys presented to the city. And we're already meeting with the new folks that are going to be constructing the motel or the RV park down here where the old motel used to be down in the city of Arlington. And we're meeting with them next week and plans are moving forward and it's going to be a good deal.
Good, good.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. It's good to have your permissions.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
We're focusing forward.
Yeah. Spaces.
Well, their original plot plan was twenty eight and I don't think they realized exactly how much property they do have because it does extend beyond the main layout in the front to their main gate. So there's, there's actually almost like two full acres down here, so. There, that's why they're coming to me with us again to talk about a little bigger layout and whatnot. And this is going to include, because we impressed upon them, we wanted like a public laundry facility for the public and things like that. Because the town surely needs one and things of that nature. So we're hoping for a better layout of what the original plan was because they basically originally wanted on an RV, not an RV, but a trailer park where the spaces were a lot larger than what you would have in a normal RV park. And that was their original design, so they backed up and regrouped a little bit because, you know, we don't want another full-time trailer park, this is more of a transient thing. So in anticipation of construction coming here in the next couple of years, we're going to need that space for the amount of workers that they anticipate coming to town, even two hundred plus a day, so going to be a lot of people.
So how many acres total is there?
I think it's just shy of two, might be like two point one or one point nine, it's pretty close.
Total.
Couple acres, I mean, so yeah, it'll be a good deal. Again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to more collaboration with the county than what we've had in the past.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Arlington child, or excuse me, daycare update.
Hello.
Hello.
Ashley Baylor, the director of Arlington childcare. We're coming up on our first year. I'm filling out the papers to renew our license. And we had a great summer, we had full enrollment with a waiting list even, so that's awesome. Even people from, families from Condon are still coming on Fridays when they don't have school and stuff because they really liked their kids being here. So that's really nice and really awesome. We, our enrollment is still doing good, we have plans to actually today apply for the Child Infrastructure Grant.
Oh.
That just came out, so, and it's open today, so that's what we're going to be doing today. We have plans to do like fundraisers and stuff like that for the holidays and all of that, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So when you, with your application for the childcare infrastructure grant, is that, I mean, what, what are you applying for? Just curious, for expansion or?
So we have a couple of things, I haven't seen, because it wasn't open yet to get it fully.
Okay.
And I haven't got a chance today, but we, there is still a lot of help we need.
Yeah.
And so, and we missed this, I can't, um, that was my fault, I just didn't even think about it, still learning, but so we, there's a lot of stuff we want to do, we had, we learned a lot this summer with having mixed age groups and they really need to be, we need separation.
Right.
It's bad, and so I think we're talking about maybe doing another pod by our building for like the older kids.
Yeah.
Because the building we have now is very good for infants and toddlers, but I'd really like somewhere for the older kids to have fun and not feel like they're at a preschool.
Right.
Because that's kind of the feel and, yes, having eight-year-olds and.
Yeah, so your enrollment, are you, do you have up to, how many, how many children can you have?
Sixteen.
Okay, and then I read in the newspaper about a waiting list of sixteen, is that true?
Not of sixteen, but we had full sixteen enrolled and then we have a waiting list as well.
Okay.
And so we do have, there's like five kids right now that's going to be enrolled because of summer, some of the older kids are going to be at the daycare, so we'll be able to bring them in as well, so.
Will that satisfy the waiting list then?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you've covered your community now, okay, all right.
And a lot of that was some people have signed up babies that aren't born yet too, that are going to be born, so just like getting set up. So not, there was no one without childcare per se. Yeah.
Okay.
So we've been working with it and we talked about, because we can add more spots, but like I said, with all of the mixed age groups, it's having sixteen in that building with the mixed age groups was hard to not be able to separate them and, yeah. So that's our goal now is to have classrooms or an extra building as well as our playground. Be more safe.
Yeah, right.
So.
And maybe the county can give you, we can give you a letter of support when you get your application.
That would be awesome, yeah, anything like that.
So you've reached out to your businesses and they have helped support you, is that true? We heard that through another person, I believe, I don't think, oh, it was through Mark who was on your board when he came at the last meeting, but he couldn't give us any details about that.
So we had a couple, we had about four donations from different businesses and and then I also went to a class and we got a grant, a five thousand dollar grant for me taking this business class as well. And so we just got that yesterday as well, so.
Good.
Yeah. And we, we sent out, well, I sent out a bunch of donation requests to like businesses around as well.
And that was effective?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we did get a couple and hopefully we'll still get more, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the goal is just to stay open. Yeah.
So you didn't apply for an operational support grant?
I was, when the operational support grant came out, I was applying for what we had left over and so I didn't realize the operational support grant was happening at the same time. Yeah, so that was my rookie mistake, so, yeah.
Okay.
That hurt, but we're trying to do donations and fundraisers and.
You're trying to make it.
Yeah.
Another way.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Ask them for a letter of support just in the morning and I'll make sure. Thank you, yeah, that'd be awesome.
Okay, just any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. Mm-hmm, it's really important to the community, countywide, both communities to have stable childcare, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I've really felt the support too and.
Good.
Yeah, like it's very needed, so.
Good, thank you. Okay, this was your twenty-five capital investment grant final report, South Gillum Rural Protection District. Were you representing?
Right, sorry, yeah.
We normally just, unless we have questions, do we have any questions regarding that report? No, and so this is just the final.
Yeah.
Okay, and correspondence under three point three, and that is exciting news, we received, Oregon Broadband Office notified us that we've received the Oregon Broadband Equity Access and Employment Program Grant. This was a Gillum County initiative under the prior administration that, of course, we support. That is broadband countywide. We're excited about this. This is specifically designated for the Arlington School District and the reason for that is that Condon School District was not eligible, my understanding is they were not eligible because of a private entity who was providing that service, which they are, they're doing, Rally Networks received funding for fiber in the south end of the county and that is being done currently at no timable expense to the public because it's private, so we have, just to, to talk about the entire county and broadband, South County, we, we have asked Rally Network for a mapping to figure out which homes are going to have basically fiber to the door through what they're doing and which homes will not to, so that we can get a broad picture of where we are countywide. This grant, the B grant, is for three hundred and thirty-four hookups. There, it is a grant in the amount of seven million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, fifty-seven dollars. We will have a twenty-five percent match. So that is, in a nutshell, what this will be. This will be, you know, a significant project, but it will get us to having broadband countywide. Yes.
Who made the determination on which assets will get serviced and which ones won't?
Um, the application on, on this grant, the application dictated which ones were qualifying, which ones wouldn't. So there were some that were, and I really need to have the consultant speak on this, but that were considered too expensive to reach and some of them were excluded for that reason. Yeah, so. So, but it had to be the school district, that was the boundary lines, was, was their
painful.
Service area. So that's to be determined, you know, it is going to be a long process, we're going to have to get professionals to help us with this. Nick Green has helped us, he got us the grant, hopefully we can keep him on to help us through it.
We would be looking at what, two to three million?
We would be looking at, at today's expense, one point eight million in cash. A lot cheaper than it would have been countywide, yeah. That will be a huge checkmark on a box that needed to be checked for our infrastructure. Okay, three point four, clarification of centrally assessed property appeals. At the last county court meeting, we had a bit of discussion about our utilities that are valued by the Department of Revenue. These are wind projects and some of our major utility projects and there was some discussion about whether or not those could be assessed locally and we reached out to the Gillum County Assessor who pointed us to an ORS which stated that we do not have that authority, they must be assessed by the Department of Revenue. So we wanted to quickly get that clarification out and not rely on that possibility because we can't.
That would be, have to be something that was to be changed at the.
In line.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have consider approval of corrected bill pending review for August twenty-five. Consider approval of Gillum Wheeler Community Corrections Plan, we've been fighting on twenty-five, twenty-seven. Consider approval of IGA for community corrections. Consider approval of reinstatement amendment for group juvenile crime prevention funds. Consider approval of regular meeting minutes for September third, twenty-five. I'm going to approve the consent agenda. I'll second the motion. It has been moved and seconded, all in favor? I, I, motion carries. A little cumbersome to not have a third person to, to take a vote, but. Okay, we are to the point of unfinished business, consider adoption of Resolution twenty, twenty-five, twelve revised custodian position description. At the last meeting, we discussed the need for some additional hours for our custodian position. There's a summary in the packet and the only difference in this job description is the FTE. Are there any questions about this?
I don't have any, I think that, that was the only thing, and then it puts them into the bargaining unit.
Yes. I move to approve Resolution R twenty, twenty-five dash twelve as presented. I'll second the motion, it has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution R twenty, twenty-five, twelve as presented, all in favor? I, I. Motion carries. Okay, update regarding Port of Arlington audit. What we have, we don't have any materials to include. I intended virtually the Port of Arlington's meeting last Thursday or the Thursday before. A corrective action plan has been submitted for the Port of Arlington. The process will be that, that's specifically driven by statute. The process will be that a public hearing will be opened by the Gillum County Court, which will remain open until the Port of Arlington completes all actions for completion of the three years audits that are in arrears. Once that is complete, the public hearing will be closed at that point. So we're hopeful that the Board takes care of, of the audit situation as sure you want to as well.
And that meeting, that'll open that at our first meeting in October then.
It will begin, the statute says that, let me, I know thirty days after we receive the notice, so it would be September twenty-fifth, but the next meeting is October first, so October first will be our first first availability to open the public hearing, we'll notice it and everything.
Right.
Yeah. But currently some financial documents are being gathered that need to be gathered as part of the process by statute. Is there anything that a port had to say about that?
No, we're, we're on course to get that completed.
Okay. We also do have, although it's not a responsibility, it prevents a lot of work on our part. There is a list of the districts and where they're at on their audits. That's a matter of public pressure that we're going to be tracking and so that we don't, so that the districts don't, they're, they're forewarned about this. Okay, new business.
I apologize, but I was trying to, we have, for five point one. What's the date that we're going to start doing that, we didn't actually discuss it, when that goes into effect after it's been approved?
It's in effect right now. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, consider purchase of a twenty, twenty-three Caterpillar four twenty backhoe and that's six point one and six point two, consider purchase of a twenty, twenty-three Caterpillar one forty all-wheel drive grader. Do within these. Gillum County Road, Astoria.
Good morning. Actually, the grader was, was built into my plan and I had a front-end loader was my other, was maybe my other purchase in my equipment replacement plan. When Omega Morgan was having some issues with the industrial park, they needed some gravel put in because it was flooding at the time, nothing we had would fit in the spot. So I rented this backhoe. It fit in all the holes, it did everything we did, since we've had it, we use it constantly. I actually used it this morning again, so I think it would be a, a good addition to our fleet. That, and then the all-wheel drive grader is to replace the grader that turned upside down, fighting fire and I think it was in oh nine.
Oh.
Or oh ten, whenever, anyways. It was repaired and fixed and then it has been nothing but problems. The gremlins crawled into it, this last year, it's just been a constant headache. Be, the guy will be grinding, grading down the road and it will just stop.
Oh, thank you.
It, it, it will just stop and then he has to get out, shut it off, wait sometimes a minute, sometimes ten minutes, start it up again, it might go for two days or it might go two minutes.
What's going to happen to that?
Uh, it, it will be, a cab will actually take it as a trade in.
A trade, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So.
Do you have any questions?
No, I, I just, I was like, I finally looked through the contracts and saw that you use Sourcewell.
Yes.
So you didn't have that. The only thing I think is probably be a good idea is to put it in the agenda briefing too, when we, whenever these kind of things come up.
Okay, all right.
So.
Yeah.
I, I did see it was in the notes.
Yes.
So.
Right.
Yeah, it's.
So in case somebody asks, we got three.
Yes.
Right, yeah, yeah. Um, the backhoe was a used machine, it was actually a State of Idaho return. Hundred-hour, hundred-hour machine, they don't use them at all, so it's basically brand new. Wow, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Okay.
Questions other than that comment, so.
Okay.
All right, let's take each item separately, so six point one. I move, go ahead, okay, I move to approve the purchase of the used Caterpillar four twenty backhoe. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the Caterpillar backhoe, all in favor? I, I, motion carries. And the next piece of equipment, go ahead. I move to approve the purchase of the twenty, twenty-three Caterpillar one forty AWD grader as presented, second. It's been moved and seconded to approach just the twenty, twenty-three Caterpillar, all in favor?
I.
I, motion carries. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Want to give a short update while you're sitting here? Great, go ahead, you want?
Road, what's happening?
Uh, road update. Our, all of our paving this summer went phenomenally well. Got Ferry Canyon paved, overlay on Brown Lane, Richmond Road, did some pretty serious patching on Lone Rock, did that, chip sealed all of that, chip sealed Blaylock and Lower Rock Creek. Very busy season, did all of that. Uh, right now, the crew is working on Erickson grade on the new graded there. Um, it's going extremely well. Um, I should have a full complement of crew next week, so we'll get a lot more done. Uh, we're striping right now, so I have a guy off doing that, hauling paint for them, but they'll, they'll have that completed today. We will do the crack sealing of the courthouse and the industrial park, probably not next week, probably the following week, do that. We're ready for winter.
So on Erickson grade, which, what parts of it are you working on?
We, we're actually moving the road to the other side of the canyon.
Okay, so that's on the east side of, or the grade.
Would be cut on the southeast side, yes, yeah. Um, there was no way to rebuild the existing road and keep the road open. So we just moved the road over, uh, the top is tied in, we have grade cut to almost half of it and then that's why I'm hoping by the end of next week we'll be somewhat down to subgrade. Uh, the crusher has, all the rock is already produced, it's up there at the John Burns pit. So my material's close. So that's kind of what my plan is to work on that until fall grading starts. And when fall grading starts, I lose four guys to grading roads and so it'll just be, uh, me and one other guy to do the odd jobs, work on stuff. So we're busy that way. The Cedar Springs, the, that, uh, the engineers, Anderson Perry, did the, the wetland report because of the, the dry lake beds. And so that permit has gone to the state to make sure that what they've proposed is going to work. So they're hoping that we have all the permits and everything in hand by sometime in the spring, early summer.
Okay.
Early summer, so I have, I have, I've kept my, my next year's work plan is kind of wide open to work on that. But if something happens, I, I do have a fallback plan to keep the crew busy.
Good.
Yeah.
Good, great, okay. The next, the next items, I was just wondering if you could just offer the road department side and your help coordinating the, well, it's three, excuse me, it's six point three, consider approval of industrial ground lease for Leaning Juniper Wind Power. Just your part of, of that?
They would, they would like to put in another access to that, to the east side over there, down there by Hickerson's old house, down there. And then I would.
You've been in the loop.
I've been, I've been in the loop, I would like to make that a permanent access. You know, they were talking about, well, we'll build it and then when we're, we're done with the project, take it out.
No, it's going to be permanent.
Let's, let's make it permanent, that way if, if somebody else comes in, um, it just makes it easier for getting those longer components in it, in it.
Yes.
That way, yeah.
So I just wanted you, since it was next on the agenda, you were part, a little bit part of discussing this with.
Yeah, I've been.
With Greg.
Yeah, with them a lot.
Okay, and then also the next item and after that will be the road use agreement.
Yes.
So let's start with the, the leads.
Okay.
If you would just stay here.
Yes, yeah.
Um, and on the next two items, so we are to item six point three, consider approval of industrial ground lease agreement for Leaning Juniper Wind Power Two LLC. So again, this was the east side of the industrial park, which is approximately eleven acres and as you can see in the, in the summary, this will be a semi-annual rent in the amount of fifty thousand dollars with a rent increase. And it has been a kind of, kind of a long process, but we're finally there to get this finalized and this is going to enable the repower of Leaning Juniper Two B to have a place for their components, so this, this will be good for our local economy.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah.
So.
And plus it's an improvement to the industrial park.
Right, it gets it, it gets used, yes. So are there any questions about this?
And I think I, our legal council did review it thoroughly. And did they think they they would be done by only twenty seven May or?
You mean with the project?
Yeah, will they need an extension on that or?
Um, the, according to today's estimates, they would go in this. Um, this would be as of January first of twenty six and according to their estimates, this will be, it'll be desirable with any.
Yeah, the the repowers usually go pretty fast.
Yeah, and is Darren Cavan on the line?
No.
No, okay, he had potentially a conflict, so thought maybe he could just speak to that if not. But they, we worked through this with legal counsel and we went months on this, so I think we've, we've got it pinned around, so. There will be a permanent fence around that and I will say that law enforcement appreciates that because they this is right alongside the road and it helps with security.
Yeah, before it was kind of, you know, all we had was a cable across the one entrance.
Right.
The, the cable wouldn't get put back up or the, the cable actually, the padlock got cut a couple of times.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the industrial ground lease agreement with Leaning Jennifer Windpower two LLC as presented.
I'll second the motion. It has been moved and seconded to approve the industrial ground lease agreement for Leaning Jennifer Windpower two LLC. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next, the next item is consider approval of First Amendment to, if this was a current road use agreement that is being amended.
Yes.
Or Leaning Jennifer Windpower two LLC. So anything that you wanted to add to that?
No, other than I, I did receive a Second Amendment to a road use agreement for Bottom Miller Weatherford just got it yesterday for the solar project, Oregon Trail Solar.
Okay.
Um, they would like to extend that to uh, December of twenty nine.
Okay, is that one coming to us then?
Yes, yeah, I just got it. I was gonna, I didn't, I didn't know if.
Go on another.
It came to Joey and I.
Okay.
I didn't know if Anya had received that yet or not.
So October first is okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Um, are there any questions about this, this road use agreement for Leaning Jennifer Windpower two? Okay. I make a motion to approve the First Amendment of the road use agreement for Leaning Jennifer Windpower two LLC. It's been moved and seconded to approve the road use agreement as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Now we need to go back and pick up the road use agreement for Weatherford Ranches LLC for their water line. That was on the consent agenda when we moved it to new business. Is there anything you want to add on that one?
Uh, no, I, I met with, uh, I've, I've spoken to Weatherford, uh, I guess to be the ranch manager now, actually went with him and and drove the project. All they're gonna do is cross Tree Lane.
Okay.
The rest of the project, it's, so it's not a big issue. They do have there's several obstacles they're gonna have to go with across the road because of the, they're going to cross down there by the substation in Tree Lane. There's fiber down there, there's.
Oh.
Yeah, but that, that will be their problem, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it's not gonna impact the county road at all.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just wanted to visit with a new agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
I move to approve the road use agreement for Weatherford Ranches LLC. I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the road use agreement as presented. All in favor? Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, consider appointment of members of the Cultural Trust Coalition. That is item six point five. Uh, looks like we have Julie Lennis and Rochelle Bennett as new appointees for the cultural. Any questions, any thoughts? I think it's great because I think this is one of those boards they have trouble keeping still, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move to appoint Julie Lennis and Rochelle Bennett to the Gillon County Cultural Trust Coalition effective September seventeenth, twenty twenty five through December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Julie Lennis and Rochelle Bennett to the Gillon County Cultural Trust Coalition effective September seventeenth, twenty five through December thirty first, twenty eight. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our regular business. Announcements, uh, do you have anything?
Um, I am just hoping that the triennial review for the Gillon County Public Health will be over soon. So it's been delayed since the gal that was doing the review had a medical leave, so. But they should be wrapping it up soon.
Okay, all right. Uh, for, for Gillon County, we do have upcoming couple of things on announcements. There will be a uh, virtual events tour on October twentieth. And that is sponsored by Gillon Soil and Water Conservation District. And I also believe this is, there will be legislators to look at this project. So I think that's, that's exciting in the partnership that we have assisted with in response to the Lone Rock Fire.
And we're the, it will be out there at Lone Rock then?
Yeah, so we're Plan Two Ten, meet at the Condon Parish Hall on October twentieth. Um, and then the tour will go from eight thirty to noon and then lunch will follow, so. And you can contact her winters, the district manager, if you have questions. Okay, and we had scheduled a tri-county court meeting October. Anya, can you help me? And that has been canceled because we will not have a full of all of the county commission cannot be present of the three counties, so we're gonna reschedule that.
We, it's our turn to host it.
We're going to, and we haven't done it for so many years, we're just gonna start, yeah, so, yeah. We were fortunate to have the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court visit us yesterday in the Gillon County Courthouse. And it was, she's visiting, I think she's at all of the, all of the counties and we had a really great visit with her and were able to tell her about the county showcase. You know, what, what we're doing here with the state's doing a little bit of, of what is involved in the Supreme Court. And also introduce her to some of our young people that are going to be our hopefully some of our future leaders. Quinlan Shaw is our work experience person and she was able to attend and meet the Chief Justice as well as Autumn Ackerman, who is our part-time assistant. Um, so I thought that was a good opportunity for them. There was the DA, the sheriff, the finance director. Nine one one was there to meet the Chief Justice and others, so that, that was good. I'm meeting with Waste Management. We had a really good meeting yesterday regarding renegotiating the host fee agreement. I think we're very, very close as well as the conditional use permit. I think we've had some discussions about the fact that there were things in the conditional use permit that are not applicable to land use planning that need to move into the host fee agreement. And we had a really good, I felt it was almost final before we send that to legal. So we'll have hopefully three full months to have time for the legal review on that. Um, and then that'll be done. It's a, it's a big one. It only happens every ten years. So there's a lot of, you know, research and study that goes into, to that. That is the pot of money that makes up the approximately five million dollars of the economic enhancement ordinance. So you have to have that negotiation before you can have any benefit from that funding, so. This Waste Management has been, you know, over many, many years a good community partner with Gillon County. Is there anything else?
It's a long process with their permitting.
Yes. Right, yeah. But I think the future's right there for them and, and the future of, of what, of what they're gonna do in the coming ten years. So do you know any more about the, the gas plant up there? Other than what was written in the paper, because. Oh, okay, so let's, let's touch on that. That is in attack. They have paid their taxes for at least the one year, so they are not going into foreclosure. Um, I think that maybe was published prior to a deadline of some sort. So there, it is not in foreclosure. It is not Gillon County's at all. So I think they have to pay the last year of taxes in order to stay out of foreclosure.
Okay.
So, yeah. And that was paid like few days before the newspaper article came out.
Okay. I just wondered, because.
Yes, yeah. So is there anything else for the good of the order?
Okay, um, let me make sure we covered everything. I wanted to come today. Okay, oh, I will. How, how close are we on that? Policy of maybe for first responders and EMTs to respond, you know, we were gonna come up with a policy for employees at the court. Um, you know where we're at on that. Maybe give me more detail about your idea. Do you want everyone to respond whether or not they work for an elected official or or are a court employee, I mean, how, yeah. Well, I'm talking about in the situations when, you know, it like pages out two times and nobody's responding. I know there's several employees that are on this service, so. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can do it without penalizing them for leaving, you know, like they don't have to use up their sick leave or their whatever, they can.
That, I think that, so if their supervisor allows it, basically, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
If their supervisor allows it.
Okay. So right now, the one that I know in our courthouse are Todd, uh, Autumn is the first responder and then Daryl drives. And then Irene Laurie, so.
Okay. All right.
Especially when there's.
Currently.
And mostly, it, it, most of the time it's okay. If there's only one call, but then if we get a second call, that's when, you know, it becomes kind of a crunch.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I think we would have to get it in detail of what, what we would do. And so do you, have you talked to, um, uh, maybe, maybe if you came to us, I'm just trying to think, a staff meeting or something to help refine it.
Yeah.
And then I would just not be there so that you could be there.
Yeah, because I, I don't.
Because. Go there, because you've got all kinds of people saying, well, what about this and what about, you know, different scenarios? Like, for example, the road department. Well, if they're paving, you know, I, we would have to be sure that with supervisor approval, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and then not override their authority to get the work done.
Yeah.
But yes, I totally, I agree that we need to somehow incentivize first responders. The other, the other idea was Sherman County does a pay differential for new. You know, I don't know if that's something Gillon County would be interested in, but it's a thought, which isn't allowing them to respond, but it's encouraging new.
Yeah, I know they, so the ABS out there at the wind site, they, they give incentives to their employees if they were, got to be first responders or EMTs.
Okay. So maybe.
And I don't know if that was.
Okay.
Per hour increase or what?
I don't know.
Because then they had that, you know, on the job.
Yeah. Maybe if you came to a staff meeting and that would at least get a person would message the idea with the people actually.
Okay.
Implementing it and we were supposed to have one in September, but it might be the first of October, maybe.
I'm working with.
Okay.
The DA's office that's supposed to.
Okay.
Sort of get a date.
Okay, okay, I'll let you know.
As long as it's not between the third and the eleventh.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll be back at Niagara Falls, so it's gonna be kind of hard for me.
Yeah. And then we'd have to think about the union. How does that follow with the union and, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a few things to make sure that we don't have any pickups later.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, and I, I mean, I'm, I, I don't envision it just clearing out the court house. I'm just like, you know, you just need for instance, like on the ambulance, to be able to have an intermediate take and perform as an intermediate, there has to be another EMT on the ambulance. And currently that, that is only Todd. So, okay. But I, I don't, I can't see him and Eileen leaving, you know, things that they, if they have transports and.
Right.
There, I can't, I don't see them leaving that, that if they're just working in the office, taking calls and stuff, again, possibility that one of them could leave and just stuff like that.
Um, and like maybe the policy needs to say at court, you know, if the work schedule allows or something like that, so that the supervisor has the control of, you know, we can't leave the ten people who plan to have ride, I, you know, it's a yeah, you know, maybe you do respond to the emergency, but make sure you call those people and make sure they're not gonna get the ride that day. I don't know.
That's, well, most of the times they have drivers that are taking them, but I, I do know that like Eileen and Todd will take people around town.
Yeah, right, okay. But yeah, if we can, you know, sometime in October, find out when they're having a meeting.
Those South Gill County.
No, the, the staff.
Staff, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Tell them to have it after the eleven.
Okay, um. No further business, this meeting's adjourned.